Hello, Ms. Gelman.
Mayor Damba, I want to know where that is behind you because I want to go there.
That's Willamette Falls.
Is it?
Yeah.
Whole picture of it.
I shot that for Metro about, God, six, six years ago, I think. They've been using it to advertise their, their project there.
Oh, it's amazing.
Thanks.
Scott, she's still having some issues with the audio, so give her a minute. Let's still skip and do her second, okay?
Oh, for sure.
Thank you.
And I think, let me double check with Darren. I'll be right back and then we can start. And we're good. Go ahead, Mayor.
I call the 2,314th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted by Zoom video conference. The public has been invited to watch the meeting via the city's YouTube channel, Comcast Channel 30 and City Limits, or by logging into Zoom as an attendee. The public may submit comments and writing by email to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. The public may speak during this meeting by first registering by emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov and providing your name, city of residence, and topic. When it's time to take public comment, staff will monitor the email inbox, the Zoom participant window, and the Zoom chat to see if anyone would like to speak. We'll take comments in the order that they are received and/or seen by council and staff. If members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. All right, so please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cayo Puya, et cetera, treaty with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, our announcements, we've got... The letting library remains closed due to COVID-19, but staff have been working to provide opportunities for the community to connect with programs and events online. One upcoming event that you don't want to miss if you have children at home between the ages of four and eight is called My Gym Super Kids at Home, which will be held on Tuesday, May 12. This free class will challenge kids mentally and physically while they have a blast. Once you register online, you'll have access all day to the class. The Milwaukee Farmers Market opened this past Sunday from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Hariston Street and Main Street and will now operate each Sunday through October. Modifications to the market are extensive to provide a safe shopping experience and focus only on providing essential items. Please review the COVID-19 requirements on the market's operations plan prior to visiting the market, which is available on their website at www.milwaukiefarmersmarket.com. Or if you have questions, call 503-407-0956. The candidate information packet for the 2020 general election is available on the city's website. The November 3 general election will feature city council positions one and three. The candidate filing window is July 27 through August 25. If you have any questions, please contact the city elections officer by email at OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7502. The city recently awarded 47 grants to local businesses through its Business Relief Fund. Approved businesses were, grant, were awarded grants ranging from $1,500 to $4,000. The total funding award was $132,000, which came from the construction excise tax program. To help supplement the program, the city is accepting donations to the fund through May 15. If you are interested in supporting this program, please make the check payable to the city of Milwaukee and mail it to City Hall at 10722 Southeast Main Street, Milwaukee, Oregon 97222. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukieoregon.gov. All righty, did Principal Gelman get sorted out?
I believe so, Scott. Is she still muted on your end?
She is not muted. Ms. Gelman, we can see you. Does not sound like we can hear you, though.
Is she able to, she was going to try and call in on the cell phone, Scott. Is there a way to make sure she can speak from her cell phone?
There is a phone call, a phone number in the attendee panel. I don't know, I can't, I don't know how I would confirm that was her, though.
She says she's on the phone now.
Okay, I'm going to promote this. I'm allowed to talk. Ms. Gelman, can you hear us?
Okay, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you so much.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move to that item. So Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award, and it'll be presented by Ms., the MHS Principal, Carmen Gelman.
Thank you. Is Evelyn on here?
She is.
Hi Evelyn.
Hi Evelyn.
How are you?
Gosh, I hope this works. Okay, hello, everybody. I'm very happy to be here tonight and thank you so much for hosting our student Evelyn. Evelyn Vargas-Vazquez is here with her parents, Yolov Vazquez and Maudo Vargas. So I want to welcome them as well. Is this working or is it, it's giving a lot of feedback?
It's actually going pretty well. You're doing great on our end.
Awesome. Okay, great. So, um, I'm really grateful that you all allowed me to bring Evelyn forward because she's such an amazing student and she has been such a huge leader in our school and in our school community. So I'm just really excited to be recognizing her tonight. As always, I get a lot of information from teachers and staff about different students that we bring forward. So I'm going to read a few things, Evelyn, from your teachers, and then I will send you this information in an email.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so I'll start with Mr. Lindman. Mr. Lindman says that Evelyn is a physics, a physics student of mine. She was added two weeks late into the first semester because she wanted more, and he capitalized the word "more", challenged academically. This is a snapshot of who and what she is. She is very organized and aspires to gain understanding of everything that she comes across. She is a member of the National Honor Society, always demonstrating her desire and willingness to help others. She is willing to give her time to helping others. She is a fine example of an exceptional student and represents us all incredibly well. She is also one of the very seniors in physics that has actually engaged in the distant learning climate we currently have, which only demonstrates her love of learning. She continually asks terrifying questions in her attempt to learn as much as possible. She is my Albert Einstein Excellence in Physics Awardee this year, which goes to a physics student who shows commitment and lifelong learning throughout their high school physics experience. She's an incredible young lady. That's for Mr. Lindman. And, um, El Profe, El Profe says, I don't, I'm not going to put any sentences what she represents, but I'll just say it in words. She's intelligent, hardworking, caring, cordial, punctual, composed, ambitious, polished, considerate, dependable. She is one of the best students, her to speaker or not, that I've ever worked with and has an amazing future in front of her. And that's for Mr. Profe. And then I have two more because I know that you're very close to these people. So Evelyn is caring, reliable, she's a strong leader, who has great academic and intellectual skills and works hard to make equity and inclusivity a staple of the Milwaukee community. She is always ready for a challenge. I'd especially like to recognize Evelyn for her role as our Latino student group, Asociación Milwaukee. Evelyn has been an original member since the club's inception. The goal of this group is to celebrate and develop positive and healthy Latino cultura, academia, and lifestyle. Evelyn now is the club's executive director and has helped bring life our annual, to our annual baile. The only one of its type in our county. Choreographed dance performance by our group for the community helps increase the Latino student graduation rate to 80%, a rate, a rate better than MHS and other populations. From Mr. Aguilar. And then the last one. Evelyn is just great. She is always focused on building community and bringing people into the community. She remains focused in school and in tennis, always making herself better than the day before. She is incredibly respectful to all people and is so wonderful to have around. As a teacher, I find that Evelyn is always pushing me to give others the same care and love that she exudes, and I don't even have her as a student. It's just her supportive nature to always encourage others to be better than they used to be. Evelyn is a great representation of what we've asked our students to be outside of our school and community. And that's my, adiós.
Thank you.
So Evelyn, um, I wish I could be with you today and so I could look at your beautiful face and just let you know that I'm so appreciative of what an amazing human being you are and how much you've contributed to the school community. And just thank you for your leadership and your parents should be really proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola.
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 Gracias.
Evelyn, do you have plans for what you're gonna do next year?
Uh, yeah, my plan right now is to attend Pacific University and then I want her in the bachelor's in dental hygiene.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, usually we go to the council. It's a little strange in this venue, but we'll go ahead and go for it. And I'm just gonna pick to avoid confusion, so Council President Falconer, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Sure. I'm sorry I'm not wearing my Pacific University gear today. I wore it all day long and then I decided to take off my sweatshirt, but I'll look forward to seeing you around campus. My husband coaches football there and we've got quite the family ready to welcome you on that campus. It's, it's a remarkable place. When I hear Principal Gelman talk about her students, one thing that I'm always struck by is, is, you know, not just the academic excellence and rigor and your, your commitment to that, but also the, the, the community that, that you, that you help lead, that you bring people into. And I think that you're gonna find a very comfortable and welcoming experience when you, when you join the Boxer family. So congratulations on that. I look forward to seeing you around. I wanted to just, I, I, I wanted to make sure to congratulate your parents as well and, and to thank them for raising such a remarkable young person. And thank you all for being in our community and contributing so much. And of course, as always, Principal Gelman, you're remarkable and I really, really appreciate everything that you're doing for, for our community. So thank you and congratulations, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Counselor Parks.
It would work better if I unmute myself, I guess. Evelyn, and thank you so much for all you've done in your educational career and through community efforts and that type of thing. And Principal Gelman, thank you for bringing us her and the folks that you bring to us every month, which is, you know, it's just amazing to find out that there are so many diverse kinds of activities that our students participate in. And when we see one that excels in so many areas, it's really gratifying to know that the future, I think, is in very, very good hands. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes, Evelyn, it's great to read all about you and to meet you this crazy way. I, you know, like many of the students that Principal Gelman brings, you have great credentials. You've done a lot of AP work and you're in the National Honor Society and you've got soccer and tennis, so you're obviously well-rounded, as well as your community work here with Ascensión and other community volunteering work. So it's, it's always inspiring to see how well-rounded today's students are. I think what really spoke to me from what Counselor, or what Principal Gelman was reading about you that jumped out to me as, as special about you is, is the intellectual curiosity and drive that Mr. Lindman, I think it was, spoke about you being his Albert Einstein and that you came into the class wanting more because you were maybe not being challenged enough in, in, in another class. So I think those talents will stand you great stead in college and beyond. That sort of intellectual curiosity is so important and, and I'm sure you'll do great things and we look to hearing more about, more about what you're doing in the years ahead.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Izzy.
Yeah, it's hard to know what to add here. You've done so much cool stuff and it's really nice to have this piece back of our council meetings because we didn't get to do it last time. So thank you, Principal Gelman, for making this possible. I guess I want to know more about you, Evelyn. We've been doing lots of talking and it's awkward in this format. You just, it's hard to have that back and forth feeling, but you know, you've had such a diverse set of things that you've done, as Counselor Parks pointed out. And I'm wondering what has been your favorite thing and what has been the most meaningful piece of your experience as a, as a senior leaving? This has got to be on your mind to some degree.
Well, I really appreciate everything, like every aspect of high school. Attending Milwaukee was like, it was, it's just like such a good community there. It's just really inclusive and stuff, you know? And I feel like one of my favorite parts was being in Ascensión because it's just nice to have in, like, a place where there's so many people that you relate to and just like being able to put our culture out, like, for everyone to see and doing community service together. It's just, it's something really special.
Well, I think your leadership there is something that will be a legacy, something you've given to students who will come after you, so that's a great gift. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. That was, I was very struck by the Ascensión work that you've done and, and it sounds like the, the leadership that you've given has helped people thrive and, and that's critical. It's so important at this time, particularly these last three years. It's a particularly critical time to help people thrive and it sounds like you've done an extraordinary job. I think, I, I think I've met a, through Zoom, a future leader in America. Very impressive, all the things that you've done. I'm really glad that you are receiving this award and glad we kind of get to meet you.
Thank you.
So I have a thing to read. The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School. Evelyn Vargas Vasquez, that had been known to all on this fifth day of May 2020, the city council of the city of Milwaukee and municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon recognized this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evelyn, we'll be mailing the certificate and letter to you, so look, be on the lookout for that.
All right, thank you.
I also want to add that Evelyn is also just one of the most humble people that flies under the radar. So her leadership is so selfless. You, you just, like, she's not, like, in the front everywhere for people to see all the time and she just leaves and out of kindness, in her heart. So, thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you, Ms. B.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, first of all, I'd like to thank, thank everybody. Thank, thank you guys for, for all the work that you done with Evelyn and she, she's an excellent human being. She's a very talented and gifted person and she's a hard, hardworking student for sure. I know, I see her working like overtime and her assignments or whatever was school-related and she, she really deserves what, you know, she's been a work of. And I know all these achievements, well, first, thank God and thank you because it takes a, a good educational system. And at Milwaukee High School, we've seen, you know, compared to other school districts, we've seen her success, you know, mainly because of, of, you know, the level, the expectations of this high school, you know, is pushing the students to, to have bigger goals. So, yeah, we're very proud of Evelyn. And thank you all, thank you very much. There's my wife, Roski.
Thank you.
There's her sister, Jessica. Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you. Very much. All right, so then we are, each of the council members is going to make a brief remark to the entire senior class of 2020. So, let's see, should we do it in reverse order except me? Kathy, you wanna go first?
I think that means it's my turn. Sure. I just wanted to say there's, there's so much changing in the world right now and yet here you all are and this big change is happening in your lives at the same time. And your memories of graduation aren't, aren't gonna be what you hoped they would be. They're not gonna be like anybody else's graduation has ever been. And despite all that, with this diploma, you've still secured a brighter future for yourselves. You've made good choices, you've gotten to this point and you deserve our, our best hopes for your future and our deepest congratulations. So thank you for all that hard work and go get 'em.
All right, Lisa.
So I'm gonna read mine. I'm not as, as, as good as Kathy is off the cuff, so. "To the Milwaukee High School class of 2020. I'm sorry the usual community events of your senior year aren't possible this year, but I know you Mustangs are strong and resilient, just like your mascot. I'm so proud of you for remaining strong through two years in the pods and now graduating during a global pandemic. Think of the stories you'll have to tell your own grandkids. Don't lose sight of the dreams you had a few months ago. You deserve to see them all come true. Congratulations and best of luck with wherever your path takes you this fall."
All right, Wilda.
Thank you. In the years to come, you will be the examples that are held up to others about how you successfully completed high school and moved on with life in the middle of a global pandemic. We know our future is in good hands. Your strengths shine through. Thank you and congratulations.
Thanks. And Angel.
Dear class of 2020, what a year, right? This is not what any of us expected and certainly not what you, your friends, and family and teachers have been planning for. Graduating high school is one of those milestones that deserves to be honored with all the pomp and circumstance of a grand commencement ceremony. And while the current pandemic has turned the traditional way we mark such occasions on its head, it cannot take away your achievements or the pride you should feel in a job well done. I have every confidence that your generation will triumph over this challenge and meet the future with a fortitude and wisdom we will all look back on with great admiration. Congratulations to you and all of my best.
All right, well, class of 2020, you've had a heck of a high school career. You are being set up to be some of the strongest people out there between your schooling in the pods and your graduation during a pandemic. It's a good thing because we need strong, bright people to solve all the problems that we currently have in this world and you guys are gonna do it. I have every faith. So thank you, congratulations, well done, and we look forward to having you in the community. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Is whoever supposed to be here for the Poppy Day?
I've had word from Mike Wilson, the commander at Post 180, that they are unable to join, but I can make a few brief remarks and if you want to read that proclamation, we can continue in the order.
Okay, I will find the proclamation. Go ahead, make some remarks.
Okay. We invited American Legion Post 180's commander, Mike Wilson, and chaplain Jerry Craig, who are familiar faces at city council meetings, to join us this evening. However, they were unable to attend tonight, but in their absence, they sent a note and I would just say it's an opportunity for the city to highlight the work that one of our community partners has done. And if, excuse me, I just gotta scroll through all the slides back to where I was. There we go. All right. So, thank you, city council, and Mr. Mayor for entertaining this annual Poppy Day proclamation. Poppy Day has its roots in a poem, the Flanders Field poem from World War I, and it's to mark the end of that war and the hope that it's the end of all wars. And this year, the American Legion had asked that it kind of be tied to Memorial Day, too, and I can't tell you what plans they may have had at Post 180 that, of course, are no longer scheduled to happen. They, they, like most organizations, have canceled their activities for the foreseeable future. But one thing that our friends at Post 180 are doing, as the slide on the screen shows, they are hosting a blood drive. And I have it from Commander Wilson, this evening, their goal is to get 41 people to sign up. And you can see the reservation number there, I just threw the American Red Cross. So if you're a Red Cross donor, I think you may know the familiar ways that the American Red Cross has to register. Their goal is 41, but they, they were in the twenties, I believe, that they had 24 or maybe close to 30 people, so there are spots still available if you are able and healthy to donate. The American Legion, this is kind of the big thing they're pushing right now in our community.
Scott, I, I just have additional information on that. Colin actually called to sign up today and they said that it was full, but if that does happen, there is another blood drive happening in the not-too-distant future that will be at the Masonic Temple. So, Col, they need the blood, they need the donations.
That's excellent to hear. That's great. Mr. Mayor, that is the bulk of the remarks, of the comments to introduce this, and I'm sorry that Jerry and Mike couldn't join us, but with that, I'll turn it over to the proclamation.
Right. Whereas the United States of America is an enduring symbol of freedom, protected willingly by citizen soldiers who have answered the call to service. And whereas we must never forget the sacrifices of war and the debt owed to those who defended our right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the red poppy flower memorializes the lives laid to rest in Flanders Field during the First World War and in other conflicts since then. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary works to remind all Americans of the sacrifices of those who served by annually distributing red poppy flowers. And whereas the city of Milwaukee and American Legion Post 180 have worked to commemorate and honor those who served in the Vietnam War. And whereas May 25th, 2020 is Memorial Day, a time for all Americans to give thanks for the men and women who have died in the armed services for this nation and to mark the occasion by lowering the national, state, city, and organizational flags to half-staff. And whereas the city of Milwaukee and American Legion Post 180 wish to pay tribute to those who made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of our freedom. Now therefore, I, Mark Damba, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 24th, 2020 as Poppy Day in the city of Milwaukee.
Mayor, this is Ann. Before we keep going, this is a somewhat awkward format. We haven't done this with presentations in this way before, so I also just wanted to let Evelyn know that we love having her on the call and she is welcome to stay as long as she would like to tonight. But we are actually done with that portion of the presentation, so it's totally up to you. And then the other thing I just wanted to call out is that this is a chance for the council before we go on to our next item. If you do want to hear anything about the high school, Principal Gelman's still on the call and she's happy to speak to those as well. So I just wanted to take a quick break before we go too far to let Evelyn know she can have her night back.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Go enjoy the sunshine, Evelyn. Principal Gelman, do you, do you want to get us caught up on where everything is with the, the high school? Principal Gelman, do you want to get us caught up on where everything is with the high school? You are muted somehow.
Her phone is still on the line and unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me now? So right now, we're just about to, obviously, we had to change the way we do things. So we went into action pretty quickly. And we're in the process of phases. So our first phase was to make sure that all our seniors have what they need in order to graduate. We created a script for teachers that asked about like housing and food insecurities and mental health supports, and then technology. And asked them to connect with 20 students and split students by teachers that they knew. And so we've made connection with all of our kids but three. So, and once we got those forms, we were able to triage and get the supports the kids needed around like food or mental health supports or housing or that kind of stuff and connect them. So we've been going fairly well. Right now, we're in phase one of our implementation, which is we're looking at all of our kids' grades, nine through 12, and seeing where they're at and making sure that they're being connected with their teachers so that they can pass their courses. And then on the eighth, we're going to start our second phase. That is where we start making personal phone calls again to make sure that kids get connected. So we have anywhere from a 60% to 90% engagement, depending on students that can engage. So one of the things that we recognize is that some of our student populations have a hard time accessing the curriculum or knowing how to navigate the computer system. So now we have our instructional assistants that can call and help. But that took a little while. So right now, we're just kind of in this process of learning how to do this online. And we aren't allowed to Zoom or hang out with our kids. So that makes it a little difficult as well. But I think our processes were very good. And other schools asked for our forms and all of that stuff because it was just a really smooth process. And my assistants are amazing. And all of our teachers have really stepped up to the plate. And we all just really miss our kids. The move really quickly. We're all packed up. There's a couple rooms that still aren't, but they're going to be all packed up by the 13th. And Row City Movers is coming on the 15th to move us into our new building.
That's great. Well, I'm sure it's incredibly hard to not be able to be with your kids, particularly for graduation. That's got to be brutal. And I'm really sorry.
It's brutal. But we'll get through it.
We will.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Principal.
Gelman, I know that, can I just ask a quick favor? I know you're in touch with Ann Ober all the time. And if there's anything at all that we can do, I just want to make sure that you know we care very much about what's going on in your community. So please let us know.
Thank you. Ann's actually been really great. And we had a conversation the other day. And so we feel very supported by the council and the city. So thank you so much. And we're going to get together again. I have someone setting up a meeting with us. So, but thank you. I do feel very supported by all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night unless you guys have other questions.
Thank you.
Sorry, I jumped ahead so fast. Good catch, Ann. Thank you. Our next item is Mental Health Awareness Month, a proclamation. And that will be presented by our police captain, Ryan Burdick, and the NAMI Clackamas Executive Director, Michelle Vinker.
First of all, thank you, council, Mayor Gamba, for this important opportunity. My name is Ryan Burdick. I'm the operations captain here at the Milwaukee Police Department. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And with me tonight is Michelle Vinker, Executive Director of NAMI, or the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Before I turn it over to Ms. Vinker, I just want to say a few things about how important it is to support our community and its members who are struggling with mental health issues, particularly during this COVID-19 pandemic. Not only are one out of five adults experience some degree of mental illness each year in the United States, but it's more important ever to work with all of our community partners, like NAMI, to support and meet the needs of our citizens who are struggling with these issues like depression or PTSD and anxiety, especially during these difficult times, to ensure our police officers receive crisis intervention training and to work hard to help people who are having a mental health crisis. And to really emphasize that this is a medical problem and not an incarceration problem. To make sure, as a police department who goes on about 400 mental health calls each year, we work hard to have successful outcomes. We have strong partners like NAMI and to constantly evaluate how we're doing business to best determine best practices and a compassionate response. One of the other parts is to remind all of us, especially during this COVID-19 pandemic, to take regular breaks, to exercise, take time to unwind, to maintain our social distancing, but to make sure we communicate with our friends and family members and try and look after each other as best we can, particularly when the daily life stressors are just so significant during this pandemic. One of the other items to specifically mention is resources, such as the Clackamas County Behavior Health Division. They have a 24/7 crisis line at 503-655-8585. This is a good resource for community members to connect to urgent mental health and crisis care, long-term support, counseling, safety screening, and additional resources. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Vinker, who was kind enough to help us tonight with this proclamation process.
Hello. I'm going to just go ahead and start sharing my screen, if that's okay. And get this. Need it because the little thing comes up to share your screen, right? There it goes. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Gamba and council members. Thank you for letting me speak to you today. My name is Michelle Vinker, and I am the Executive Director for NAMI Clackamas and the mother of a daughter who lives here in Milwaukee. Daily, she combats a trifecta of mental illness, MS, and epilepsy. Of those, mental health issues have caused the most disruption and disability in her life. For this reason, mental health awareness and access to supports and services has become a passion of mine. Mental illness does not discriminate. It affects people of all ages, genders, and ethnicities, while people of all socioeconomic and education levels are vulnerable. I want to share with you. Okay, it was working today when I heard it. I've had heightened anxiety and mild panic attacks. At the playground with my own children and wife there, and the feeling was... Oh, it worked much better when I did it earlier. So gripping, so terrifying. I literally had to leave and excuse myself. I am going to try to stop this and try it one more time. And if it doesn't work, then we will give up on that. It did work today when I... I've had heightened anxiety and mild panic attacks. At the playground with my own children and wife there, and the feeling was so gripping, so terrifying, that I literally had to leave and excuse myself. Okay. We're going to skip that. But the idea of that was that people, both of all socioeconomic, everybody has experienced mental health issues, and people succeed with those. So this month, we observe Mental Health Month to raise awareness about mental illness and call all Americans to be into mental health, inspired, informed, and involved. There is power of starting a conversation, being informed, and knowing the right thing to say and becoming involved as we fight the stigma and discrimination and work for access to effective, quality mental health services here in Milwaukee, in Clackamas County, in Oregon, and throughout the whole United States. 60 million people in the U.S., including over 4,000 here in Milwaukee, face the day-to-day reality of living with mental illness. And every American is affected through their friends, families, coworkers, and others that they know. Mental Health Month is a time for us all to come together, to inspire people, raise awareness, and become involved so we can build better lives for millions of people with mental illnesses. We're asking everyone to join with us and say, "I'm into mental health." Millions of Americans are affected with these conditions every year. One in five adults in the United States with a mental health condition, and one in 25 adults in the United States lives in serious mental illnesses. Half of all lifetime mental illnesses begin before the age of 14 and 75% by 24. But we do know that early interventions can and do help. Unfortunately, here in Oregon, suicide is the leading cause of death for our youth 10 to 24. 90% of those who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. But there is some hope. The best treatments for serious mental illnesses today are highly effective. Between 70 and 90% of individuals have significant reductions of symptoms and improved quality of life when they are able to access the right treatments and supports. Stigma is a sense of shame and disgrace that sets someone apart from others. It's the number one reason people do not seek treatment, even when they know that treatment will help. Dealing with mental health conditions can be tough, and isolation and blame towards individuals with mental health issues often face creates huge challenges to moving forward in one's recovery. It is also the number one reason why people do not seek mental health treatment when they need it. Mental Health Month provides the opportunity for people to come together and fight that stigma. And of course, I need to talk about the NAMI Walk. Connection, support, and advocacy are more important now than ever. We are already seeing a wave of people needing support as they are dealing with isolation, fear, and anxiety in this pandemic. We know it will continue far into the future as people deal with a truly traumatic event and the financial fallout that we know will follow. We want everyone to know they are not alone on this journey, and together we have hope. Mental Health Month is an opportunity to take action. Each of us can learn more. We can provide support. We can advocate for equal care and fight the stigma and discrimination faced every day by people with mental health disorders. People can celebrate Mental Health Month by joining the NAMI Walk, going to be done virtually this year. So it's a NAMI Walk Your Way, creating their own event to improve the lives of people with mental health conditions. And we've seen that happen in the high schools and in other areas where presentations and things have happened. Liking, following, and sharing NAMI Clackamas on the Facebook, Instagram, and other social medias. Challenging your own standing stigma and discrimination and challenging others when you see it. And that can be really, really difficult. And I know that I have been with NAMI for 10 years, and I still find myself sometimes making assumptions and feeling that stigma when I see people on the streets or other people with mental health issues. So taking the time to say, "Is this right? Do I know really what's going on here?" Telling your own story about mental illness, and that can be scary often. And volunteering for or donating to NAMI Clackamas or other mental health organizations. And advocating for yourself, for your loved ones, and for legislation that will ensure that there is funding and access for people to get the help they need when and where they need it. Or just telling someone in need about NAMI. Mental health is not for some. It is for all. I'll try this one. It has... Oh, here it goes. This is just too many links, I guess. It doesn't come on. This is my favorite, I think, all-time PSA for NAMI. But it does talk about some of our most important heroes of our time. Lincoln, our times past, Gandhi, so many others who fought for so much and stand up in our minds as heroes and great people. But they also all dealt with mental health issues and are an inspiration on how those things don't have to limit us and how important mental health is, not only in our lives, but in others' lives. So again, I want to thank you. Okay, now it's not letting me go to the next slide. For giving me a chance to be here. I want to thank you for all that you are doing to serve the same people that we are serving, to serve our community, and to serve those with mental health issues. And that is mine. Thank you for the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. I was going to...
Did you unmute?
Now you're muted. Council President Faulkner, did you have some remarks? Did you want me to share those resource screens?
I thought maybe that might be a good approach as you're reading the proclamation. Perhaps we could show some of the resources on the screen for viewers.
Yeah, and I wanted to say before I read that, you know, mental health is something that at some point in pretty much everybody's life, they are going to go through a struggle. And it's not weird. And we should all just realize that and do what we can to help people that we see struggling and be aware of it when we are struggling and be willing to reach out. Several of us recently lost a former colleague to depression, and it was heartbreaking. And we all wish like hell that she had reached out. And we all miss her dearly, so... Please, please reach out for help. There should be no stigma to this. It is, like I said, it is so terribly common that all of us will at some point go through an issue. So I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illnesses are prevalent in our country, in our county, our state, and our nation, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. And whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to early identification and effective treatment of individuals with mental health and their ability to recover to lead full, productive lives. And whereas approximately half of all chronic mental illness begins at the age of 14, and suicide is the second-leading cause of death of people ages 10 to 24. And whereas long delays of sometimes decades often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. appear and when individuals get help. And it is important to maintain mental health, learn the symptoms of mental illness, and to get help and cure the stigma and discrimination that too often interferes. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping cure the stigma and discrimination that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas and the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Milwaukee, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, to promote identification and treatment of mental illness, and to cure the resulting stigma and discrimination. Okay, our next item.
Can I add a couple of things really quick before you go on? I just want to let everyone know that we have a very wide plethora of availability of resources, so if that Clackamas County resource is not the right one or not enough, to please send people towards NAMI Clackamas, where we can help them hook up to anything that would help them, and as well as support groups and educational classes for people who are either experiencing mental health issues currently or who left someone who does. And then the last thing I want to do is while it's Mental Health Month is just invite all of the city council to join my NAMI Walk team and walk your way this May 30th, the National Day of Hope, when it's gonna be happening all over the United States. So I hope that you'll join me.
Thank you for being here, Michelle, and your slides. We do get it. I did receive them, and we'll be putting them on our webpage tomorrow, so they'll be out there as well.
Check out those videos, because they're really good, especially the second one. It's pretty moving, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. Thank you for doing this every year. It's important. All right, our next item is our Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and this will be presented by Police Captain Robbie Graves.
And before he gets to speak, this is the first time he has spoken as captain. So I just wanted to call out that because of COVID, we didn't all get to go celebrate, but it's a big deal, and this is his special moment, so welcome to the fun of presenting to council.
Thank you. I'll give it my best shot. This is a little awkward for me, on camera, as was the swearing-in ceremony. My name's Captain Robbie Graves. I've been in the City of Milwaukee for about 20 years now. I'm here to talk about National Police Week. So Mayor Gamba and members of the council, thank you for taking the time to recognize this week of remembrance for all the fallen law enforcement officers across the nation. And thank you for your continued support of the Milwaukee Police Department. It's very important to us. So in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week which that date falls in as National Police Week. So I'm gonna throw a few numbers at you as we go through this, but there's currently about 800,000 law enforcement officers serving nationwide, and about 96,000, those are women. So when you hear about fallen law enforcement officers, it's not just men, it's women there too, taking on that dangerous job. And those ranks are climbing every year as far as women in law enforcement. They've been a great asset to the profession, and they're all doing a phenomenal job. So National Police Week is not just about celebration. There's a lot that goes on with National Police Week. A lot of it's probably not going to happen this time because of COVID-19. But back in about 2007, I was in Washington, D.C. for National Police Week, and had an opportunity to participate in some of the ceremonies and take part in some of the activities for National Police Week. And it's a very heart-wrenching and moving event when you hear the stories of all the officers and their surviving families. And part of what goes on back there is not just the recognition of the officer's sacrifices, but there's also a group called Concerns of Police Survivors that reaches out to all the families of the fallen law enforcement officers. They do grief counseling, they host outward-bound retreats for the kids, they do a program back there called Cops Camp for teens and children, and they do a great job of connecting the children and families of fallen law enforcement officers to other resources. So it's really a fantastic event that brings all of these people together that have lost a loved one. It's pretty overwhelming when you see all these kids at one of these retreats, and you realize everyone there has lost a parent in the line of duty. So we've been fortunate, Milwaukee, our only fatality was Sergeant James Worrell, who died on New Year's Eve in about 1953 of carbon monoxide poisoning. I think some of you have heard that before. It was tragic. It's not really what you expect in law enforcement, but law enforcement is an inherently dangerous job. So the proclamation that you have, Mayor Gamba, lists 54 officers that have died in the line of duty this year. That is a moving tally, and since I submitted that to Scott Stouffer, that number is actually up to 61. There's also been three police K-9 units killed in the line of duty this year. And additionally, 19 officers have died from COVID-19. So that's just one more hazard this year in these strange times. It has affected our department, and it's a concern that we have every day when our officers go out on the road. We try to maintain distance and modify how we do business, but sometimes we have to work a little bit closer and personal, so that's a concern that we have. So also, following Captain Verdick's speaking about mental health, another number that you don't hear, because they're not listed in the list of fallen officers, because it wasn't duty-related. But this year, so far in 2020, 57 officers have taken their lives by suicide. And the number of officers that did so last year actually surpassed the number of fallen officers. So mental health, absolutely, it's members everywhere in society. There's no one immune to it. So it certainly drives that point home, the need for mental health, and it's fitting that this is, you know, National Mental Health Awareness Month. On a positive note, though, the great thing Milwaukee has going for it is the ongoing support for the police department. It makes it a great place to work. Like I said, I've been here 20 years. The citizens like us, we're very grateful for their support. We never want to lose that support, and we want to make certain that we always provide the best service we can for the citizens. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council, for all your support. And that's about all I've got.
Well, we are super proud of our police force and every officer in it, and we appreciate the risk that you put yourselves at every day, and the sort of extra risk you're facing right now, just existing and having to be out in public, because yours isn't a job that can be done from home. And we appreciate that, and thank you very much. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas nationally, gunfire continues to be the number-one cause of line-of-duty deaths for police officers. And whereas the Oregon Fallen Officer Memorial contains over 180 names of fallen officers, including Sergeant James Worrell of the Milwaukee Police Department, who died on December 31st, 1953. And whereas there have already been 61 officers killed in the line of duty across the nation in 2020. And whereas the citizens of Milwaukee wish to express their greatest appreciation for the sacrifice and service of those officers. Now therefore, I, Mayor Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas and the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 10th to 16th, 2020, to be National Law Enforcement Week in Milwaukee. Thank you. All right, our next item is the extension of the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration, and this will be presented by our city manager, Hanover.
Thank you very much. We are changing the date once a month based on how things are going in our community and in the nation. So rather than doing this for a long set of time, we figured it's a good opportunity for council just to remind the public that we're still in a state of emergency. And it's also a great opportunity for us to reassess how things are going at the city, and to make sure that we're still in alignment with where we need to be, both with the governor and with the county. So we will be putting these on the first meeting of every month until we feel that we can safely remove the emergency declaration.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
It's all moved.
All seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to extend the emergency declaration related to COVID-19 through June 2nd, 2020. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Next item is city manager updates.
Before Ann jumps on, just a friendly reminder echoing what Ann said earlier to Michelle and Captain Graves. People come and go out of these meetings. You're welcome to stay the duration, public meeting, but if you were to log off, nobody would think anything of it.
He just loves hanging out with us. Come on, make him stay all night. Absolutely. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
And thank you, Scott, for the reminder. So I think that there are a couple of items that we wanted to talk about tonight. The first one is that Council President Faulkner had reached out to me several weeks ago to talk about some of the struggles that members of our community are having with rent and rent burdens, as they are unable to work at this time, and may have serious health issues that are also compounding those issues. So she had brought up in a meeting doing rent assistance pot of funding, and we had looked into who might be able to provide that service. The city does not have any human service experts on staff. We don't do any vetting of human service-related tools, so we wanted to make sure that we found somebody who was qualified. I had a conversation with Trow over at Northwest Housing Alternatives this week, and they are willing, if the council would like to prioritize funding, they are willing to facilitate the use of those funds to those most in need. So I'm gonna turn it over to Council President Faulkner just to talk about what her interest is, and then I need some direction from all of you tonight as to whether or not this is money that you'd like to spend in this way at this time, knowing that we are low on general fund dollars, but that I believe Council Faulkner and I have come to some ability to figure out how much money we could afford at this time. So I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There's, I don't have a lot other than an ask. You know, I think that there are resources available to many people that are coming, but I do think that there are still members of our community who will fall through the cracks. I think about people who might be relying on income that has become unavailable to them, that isn't going to be replaced by some of the state and federal resources that are coming online. You know, rent is still gonna be due for folks, you know, whether or not their roommate or significant other, or whoever that person might rely on, is there or not. I think about, you know, thinking about on my own sort of, you know, personal story and a situation that, you know, a family member might find themselves in. You know, I personally am very lucky to have, you know, to be in a situation where even if, you know, one of us lost our jobs, my husband and I, we would qualify for some assistance. There are plenty of other people who might find themselves lacking of resources. And so my ask is to consider that we might partner with someone who is capable, who is doing this work already. Northwest Housing Alternative has rental assistant program. I think, you know, it would be, since we don't have the administrative capabilities ourselves, I think that working with Ann to find, you know, even if it's just a small amount of money that could be used as a last resort for someone who has exhausted all possible resources and hasn't been able to find resources, I think that that would be, you know, a gesture that our community would be very supportive of, and I would ask that you all would join me in asking Ann to look for a way to fit that into our budget, and work with a partner like Northwest Housing Alternatives to identify and administer those funds to people in need.
Could we, or would we, if we ultimately do this, and the money goes to Northwest Housing Alternatives, could we, and again, or would we, specify that it be utilized for City of Milwaukee residents?
That would...
And have the odd be put on it?
Yeah, that would be my ask, that it would be someone, basically, the criteria, you know, that I envision would be a resident of Milwaukee who does not have access to other resources.
To all those other programs that are coming in. I noticed in a press release I saw yesterday that 11 million was coming to the state of Oregon for rental assistance, so I certainly hope some of that filters down to our cities, our city especially.
And certainly it will.
Yeah, but still, there'll be voids.
There will be voids.
Yeah.
We know that there, yes, there will be voids.
So I guess my, am I on? Oh, I am on. I mean, I have no quibble with the idea that Northwest Housing would be an appropriate place to administer it. I think, you know, they already do that kind of program themselves, and they would be a good partner. I guess my question is, in the time where we have a ban on evictions and everything, is it better to save our money and come out in a few months when those other kinds of relief are maybe going away or lessening, and also when people are in better, people know better what their situation is gonna be? Because yes, the stimulus checks and other things are still trickling out there, and even in my family, I know, you know, some family members have got them and some of them haven't. So I guess that's the question in my mind, is are we early? Should we wait a few months?
I think we need to put it in the budget. We have two days, I think, one day, until we print our budget. So it has to go somewhere. I think we have to budget for it now. I believe that there will, there's not a ban on, I mean, there's a, there's a, it's not a ban on evictions, it's a temporary postponement on enforcing them. And partial payments should be respected, and so, you know, this is a pot of money that folks might be able to access in the meantime, to be able to bridge that, to bridge that gap. You know, I think that what Ann has discussed sort of preliminarily with Northwest Housing is sort of a, you know, just sort of a back-of-the-napkin kind of analysis about what rents look like here in the city of Milwaukee, the amounts of money that, you know, that might be needed. And it's probably not dealing, you know, it's probably not full rent, it's probably, you know, some lack, you know, it's a portion of the income that has stopped coming in for most families. You know, I think, you know, even a family receiving a one-time, you know, payment of, you know, $1,000 or whatever it is, to be able to hold off receiving that eviction notice for non-payment, you know, the sheriff can't move in and remove them, but that process, you know, simply is just getting delayed until the courts are hearing those cases again. So usually, in most situations, a one-time payment is all it takes for someone to stay in their home and to avoid ever even getting started on the process toward eviction.
Do we have any kind of statistics on the need, and do we have any kind of firm grip on what amount? And do we have any kind of firm grip on what amount we might set aside for that?
Anne, you're on mute.
I can speak to the second one. So the discussion that we've had is, we have $25,000. It's usually funding that I hold aside during the budget process, just so that as small things get realized in the budget discussions with you all, that we have some, some backup money. But it's, if this is, you know, this is budget season. We started on Saturday. So if this is the thing where we, we feel that we need the money today, we can do it. So I've got 25 set aside. And it could be all of that or a portion of that. I would leave it to you.
Are you saying that that 25 is out of today's money, not out of the next budget money? That's what I'm not understanding.
It would be out of the budget money. So because of where we are in the budget process, that is all the same money. Because we actually asked staff to give back any cash that they thought they could under expend this year in order to try and balance moving forward. So we actually ended up with about a 5% reduction in our operations use this year, and we'll talk more about that on Saturday, but it was a substantial amount of money that was returned to the fund balances. So it's using, it's using those dollars after we've balanced the budget.
But it's adding them for the next, for the coming two-year budget cycle?
It is.
Yeah. Well, and if it's coming out of the budget cycle that we're going to be working on, then that also kind of speaks to, even though it's only a couple of months, the waiting and seeing, you know, what happens a little further down the road. But I think to Lisa's point about the waiting, I think Northwest Housing Alternatives will know how to pace that type of thing and, and how to determine what those needs are and what they may be and where, where those needs might be, say, two to three months down the road as opposed to next week. I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, that, that that would speak to that issue and pretty much help out with that.
Yeah, I was, I think Anne had a conversation with them about, you know, whether or not they would be able to successfully, you know, determine eligibility based on the cri-, you know, those two, those two criteria. So-
I think the only thing I did want to add that came from one of the employees at Northwest Housing today is that this would not be COVID-specific response. This would be, we expect that families across the board, because of the recession or because of COVID, or because of a myriad of things, are currently being disproportionately affected. So I have not asked them to do any specific criteria around why. I have focused instead of where do you live and are you able to get other assistance? Or this, is this really the pot of money that will help you?
Yeah.
And I think you, you asked about statistics. Well, the, remembering back to our housing needs assessment, I might get the numbers not exactly right, but my memory is that 27% of the renters in Milwaukee are spending more than 50% of their income on housing. And when you're in that situation, one missed paycheck and you're in a lot of trouble, right? And we know that folks have missed a whole lot more than one, one paycheck in this time. So I think we, you know, we don't need necessarily to know how bad it is out there. I'm fairly certain that if we had $250,000, there would still be people that we were not able to help. So 25 is, you know, it's something, it's what we have.
I, I agree with that, and I, I think we saw how great the need is throughout the community for other things, just with the money we had for the business community that was not enough by, you know, we could have had three times that much money and been able to actually utilize it for that. So I know that. I know the need is, the need is huge and it's everywhere and it affects every single person, all of us who may feel secure at the moment. It still affects us in a number of ways, whether it's, you know, something, whether it's our friends or whether it's some of our relatives or whether it's, you know, the people that aren't going to open their doors later on or, you know, just all kinds of factors. So, yeah. So I think, yeah, I'd certainly be in support of the 25,000.
Me too.
Yeah, and I have, it's, I'm really grateful, first of all, to staff because ultimately this is being made possible by staff who did the hard work of figuring out where money could go back and really put a lot of sweat and tears into this budget process that we're about to begin. So I really want to acknowledge that, that, that is a gift that is being made possible by their work. And I know we're giving up something by doing this, and we don't know what it is yet, other than a little less certainty and a little less buffer. And those are both really important things. But I also think that we have really vulnerable residents and this, this is something we can do. It's, it's never enough right now. I want, thank you, I really appreciate. I, I want to echo those comments about our staff. I think, you know, they're just as much of this and part of this community as, as we are on council, and they, you know, that recognition that they serve this community is, and, and trying to do the best that they can for, for the residents that we serve. It's, I want to thank you. I appreciate that too.
So what I'm hearing tonight is that I'm not, I don't need a formal vote. It sounds like generally there's support for us to put the money in. So I'm going to put the $25,000 into the budget. It'll be, I'm not sure where yet, but I, probably community development. I've asked Leila to take the leadership on drafting the interim, the memorandum of agreement or the contract with Northwest Housing. As much as I'd love to say that this was, we could use this year's money, my caution is actually making sure that we get the contract done and in place, which is why I'm putting it into next year's budget. But it's two months, it seems like a long time, but it's not, and it's going to fly by. So that buys Northwest Housing, who's also overwhelmed right now, some time to get us the contract back and to create the programming. And I doubt, based on the governor's extension of the emergency clause, we will have this in place before the emergency clause is lifted, because that is on July 7th, if it doesn't get further extended. So we have the time and we're going to use it to make sure we do this right. The other thing, since I have all of you and there are people watching, hopefully, I also had a conversation with them about their food pantries. Generally, you know, the food pantries are always looking for more food. They are getting resources right now, so we haven't done a huge push to try and support them on don-, uh, food donations, but they're always looking for more. So if you have any questions for us, you're welcome to call the front desk at City Hall, we're, we're happy to direct you. But a few places, and one in particular that I'll put out there today, which is the Wichita Center, who works with our students and their families to make sure that they have food at home. So please know that we have great resources here. If you are personally struggling, you're also welcome to call our housing hotline that we have on the community development page for housing, and someone will get back to you to make sure that we can support you getting the much-needed services. But the easiest way to do this is actually to call 211. So if you are currently in need, or if you're currently trying to find who is most in need, dialing 211 will connect you with the best resources for getting those donations or taking the need you have from the right spot. Thanks.
Thank you for bringing this, Angel.
Anne, can I, can I just say real quick, thank you to Anne and to Northwest Housing Alternatives too, because that partnership with them makes this possible and makes me feel good about putting city resources towards something. I'm confident that they have the skills to do this right.
Well, and Trout really was wonderful. I mean, there wasn't a hesitation in his voice. Peters, who I talked to originally, also terrific. I think that they have incredible hearts and are doing the yeoman's job. So I really appreciate their willingness there, to take some money and actually without taking overhead off of it, use every dollar to help families in Milwaukee right now.
Yeah, that's great. Appreciate them very much. One thing I want to say before I go to the consent agenda, I've sent you all an email. I will explain it further, but I thought you could glance at it while I'm reading the consent agenda. It's, it's to do with us just lending support to a group that's working on incorporation down in Oak Grove. It won't cost us anything, it won't cost us any staff time, it's just that Metro needs a government entity to be, to party. So take a look at that while I read this, please.
Before you read that, didn't Anne start with having two issues? Did you cover everything, Anne? I thought you told us you had two.
I'm sure I did. If we can get to the end of the meeting, then I can remember what it was, I'll bring it up.
All right. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the minutes, meeting minutes of the April 7th, 2020 work session, the April 7th, 2020 regular session, and the April 14th, 2020 study session. We have a resolution reappointing Erin Lee to the library board with a revision to the resolution noting that Ms. Lee has been recommended for reappointment by city staff. The city member of council wished to remove an item from the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Audience participation, Scott, do we have anybody that's looking to participate?
I will check in the email, hold on.
Okay.
Nope, and I'm looking at the attendees. If you're an attendee and you'd like to speak, raise your hand. We have two audience members logged on and I don't see a raised hand.
You raise your hand by going to the participants list and there, and then make your cursor go over to the right-hand side and you will see a thing come up that says raise hand. For those of you who are new to Zoom.
And we did have, during your work session, there were nine people watching YouTube. At the moment, there's two, one of whom, which might be a computer that I have open. But there is an audience.
An audience of one, excellent.
Geez, Scott, we feel better.
Scott, tonight, I don't have mine open, so it's not me.
Okay, so it's not Anne. There are two in the attendees list though, on Zoom, so.
Okay, I am then not going to read the audience participation portion of this. Let's go to item six and then we can go to the support letter and after that.
I can't open their support letter.
Sorry?
I can't open the support letter.
Consular Beatty, it's actually very short, so when we get to this point, we'll go through it, but the, the request is a letter of support from the city for their application.
There's a PDF attachment as well as the pages. Did you see, can you see both of them?
Yeah, are they the same?
Yes, same thing.
Okay. Well, yeah, I can open the PDF, I just can't open-
Oh, and Doug, who is watching our meeting tonight, is also watching on YouTube, so he is the other person on that.
Thanks for joining us, Doug, it's nice to see your voice.
All right. Our next item of business then is the vacation of a city easement on the Murphy site to resolution. It will be presented by our Assistant City Engineer, Jennifer Gobley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as I have a little presentation for you. Maybe? Sure. Okay. Can you see the first slide?
Yes.
Is it in PowerPoint mode? It's getting there.
It's just not in presentation mode.
So if you want to go up to slideshow and push play. Anne, yeah? And from the beginning? Anne doesn't want to do it.
This works too.
Okay. Here we are. So let's talk about MEAC, and first I'm going to start with a little, oh, come on, overview. So this project of what was going to go through Murphy site really was established when we started talking about the loan that we wanted to obtain, that we had come before you, February 19th, 2019. Alma Flores had pretty much coached and mentored me in thinking, we've got some development sites here that we really need to think about. And when we build our infrastructure, we need to realize how those, how that new infrastructure impacts these properties and what kind of things can we do to help promote development and the type of development we want to see in our city. So one item she'd come up with is, we definitely, we don't have to build this new MEAC stormline right through the middle of the development. This would provide a great opportunity to start talking with Murphy and seeing if we can develop a new easement on the west side of their property. So first did research with Public Works, is this even possible? We do have infrastructure right now currently that goes right through the middle of their property in a 40-foot easement that we have in our hands. So we looked at that, the infrastructure really does provide utilities for, for a housing development, a building and a apartment complex on the Murphy site. It's really about eight different tax lots that we're talking about here. So Murphy would like to eventually sell the entire property and do one type of development. That's the ultimate goal. So they were definitely excited to have this opportunity to move this utility to the west side of the property. There is a benefit to our city and our citizens. It's less pipeline that we would be installing. It also gets installed at a shallower depth than what we would have had to do to go through the middle of a property. So that's just a cost savings that we do receive by utilizing this alternative route and putting it on the west side. So at the January 7th, 2020, when we were, came to you for the purchase of the Oak facility, we did bring this map. And maybe it wasn't super clear, but the intention was we were going up the west side of the property with MEAC for that development. Also, this is where the split has always been, from north face to south face, at the north end of MEAC site. So we were trying to get the loan so we could do all of this at one time. That didn't happen, and we're still trying to figure out how to do this north end and still need to work on that aspect. But right now, we are under construction for the south face and are moving forward. So let's jump over to the MEAC, um, property map here. So that has basically, here's our current easements. There is easements all over this property. It's actually pretty crazy how many easements there are. So there's easements up here along the MEAC street, there's easements along this 31st Avenue. This is where our 40-foot easement currently exists.
So when you say an easement exists there, you just mean the easement exists, or are there actually utilities there?
Ah, let me clarify. So there's actual utilities right here in 31st Avenue. So we are replacing the stormline as part of this new easement that we're putting in here, the stormline. There is water and sewer, and they tie in to the well end. So they support these properties right here. There's a, there's a pretty good-sized apartment, it's here, not huge, but it's an apartment building here. So Murphy is very well aware that this cannot be removed unless these buildings all get demoed and the buildings down here that are being built right now, where, where the old car wash used to be. There's a, a little piece of right-of-way here that's not vacated yet, and this is still right-of-way as well.
So is the 31st Avenue right-of-way vacated?
Yes. It is only a utility. Yes. It is only a utility easement. It is not a right-of-way. So, and there is still utilities up here in Meek, okay? This part right here, this is Cherry Street. It has been vacated as a street. It still has utility easement on it, but there is no city infrastructure in Cherry or Moss Street, these two sections. For tonight's, uh, request, we're only talking about Moss Street and Cherry Street as far as what the resolution would be. Um, terminating easements in these two pieces. So, um, this, we do have a new easement through here. And yes, we developed an MOA. You pretty much, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put a new storm easement on the current property, um, and there's gonna be a change, but you still need to keep the other one until those other utilities are terminated. We needed some agreement. We needed some way to be able to talk this through and have Murphy also understand that we would eventually be removing some of those utility easements so they could build a development. So when will the next steps for the easements, um, be up for discussion for Llewellyn and 31st? Those items, if you look under the city obligations, number F, they don't, they, they don't get removed until Murphy submits for a land use application. And during that land application that they have to submit for the site, the city shall determine any requirements pertaining to existing public streets, 31st Avenue and Llewellyn, the existing city easement, underlying Meek Street, and the future bicycle and pedestrian connection through the site, which could be placed along 32nd Avenue to meet the Central Milwaukee Land Use and Transportation Plan.
So Jennifer, I had pointed this out to Anne earlier, but our packet does not have F. Our packet is missing a page. RS 30 ends with, has Murphy obligations and ends with E and then RS 31 jumps to a completely different numbering. And it says it's page four of the memorandum of agreement, but, I mean, the numbering's
Okay. I don't, I provided the executed, recorded document, um, so we can verify that.
Jen, um, or Steve, I think you are on this as well. If you are able, if you have a copy on you and could email it to council right now, that would also be appreciated. I know that Jen's computer is being used for their presentation, so she probably can't.
Right. Um, so maybe I can keep going and then if you need me to email it, I can do it as soon as I'm done with this presentation. So the, the plan was, is, um, and then in Murphy's obligations, E, um, at the time, Murphy submits a land use application for the development of the site, Murphy shall provide a dedication or permanent easement, easement to the city for a bike and pedestrian connection. So we're definitely identifying it. The hard part is where is that connection exactly gonna be? And so what we put in here is we said the north edge of the site at Meek Street, or the future public street dedication of 29th Avenue on the Clackamas County Housing Authority site to the south edge of their site. They don't own the little mini-market right there at the corner of 32nd and Harrison. And so my goal is to get it as close as possible to that intersection as I was informed from planning that they were not gonna be allowed a crossing at 31st and Harrison. So this is saying they will be required to provide some dedication for that bike easement and pedestrian plan. That is, um, where we have moved, um.
Although this language about 100 feet, can you go back?
Yeah.
The prior slide?
Yeah.
Uh, 100 feet north, 100 feet west of the intersection. I mean, that's, I mean, that was our thinking at one point, but what we heard earlier tonight is that the project that planning has to look at bike connections might bring it out on Llewelling, Llewellyn, or might change that, right?
And that doesn't change what's happening here. Alls I'm saying is here's the north and here's the south and how you get that, you have to get from one end of their property to the other. And so I'm not dictating which route they go. The study is great. We're in full support of this study because that, um, basically tells us, hey, wait, we really should go on this side, um, and not even come down, um, the old 31st Street. Either one is totally up for grabs. It's also, all depends on what they decide to do in their land use application. So like Denny said, we don't know what they want to build. It might be a one single unit. It might be several units where you want to bring that bike facilities through their property. And so we get to decide that at land use.
Okay.
And it would come back to you for approval. We can't, we can't, um, terminate any other easements without your approval and we can't remove any other right-of-way. So Llewellyn, at this point, doesn't go away. It just depends on what the development wants and how we want to proceed with that.
Okay.
What else? What else can I help you with?
Um, so you're gonna probably have to go back to the map.
Yep.
So the two, you're, you're, we're just giving up at this point, the two easements on Cherry and Moss, is that correct?
Yes.
And the 31st easement we're keeping until such a date as it's unnecessary and they've rebuilt all the infrastructure through there?
Yes.
Okay.
And they have to submit a land, so we wouldn't even give these up until they have also demoed these buildings because I can't remove those easements until these facilities are completely removed off of the property.
Or what if they reconnect them to their system that they're building in?
Yeah, yeah. So it, it all depends on what the development wants to do, right? We have the ability from a public works standpoint to remove, um, the water and the sewer line and obviously I'm replacing the storm. So those three infrastructures, um, don't, aren't required to go run through 31st Avenue, um, to provide service.
And you don't have parallel service on 32nd?
We do. I can, I can serve, I can serve that development off of 32nd, um, or Harrison, uh, depending on what the, or even Meek possibly, um, depending on what the development needs are.
So can't the existing apartment building, the older house and the little convenience store all be served from 32nd? I mean, it would, it, that's a project. I realize that something has to be built, but I mean,
There is a possibility.
They don't have to be demolished to be.
But I won't remove the infrastructure until I have a new setup of a method of doing it. So that's what this MOA kind of outlines is that I'm not, I'm not, you're not, that the new, the, um, easement in 31st Avenue does not go away until we can serve either those buildings that are on site or have they been removed and we have a new plan moving forward.
Hello, council, Jen?
Yeah.
I just emailed the agreement to council, to Anne, to, uh, to Scott, yourself. So you should have it in your email soon, if not there already.
Thank you, Steve. So staff recommendations is, um, termination of the utility easements for Cherry and Moss. Um, there's no current utilities within these easements and there's no future plan to install utilities in these two easements. They're really just hanging out there, um, useless on the property.
Anybody have any other questions?
Well, I have a question for, why is this not? Can you all still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I've, somehow I've lost you all. It, it looks like the one that Steve just emailed has the same issue. And so I just wonder if, because if this is the one that was recorded is, is there something that needs to be corrected with the Clackamas County Court with, or the clerk?
Hold on, let me bring it, um, up real quick. I'm gonna.
Maybe it's actually, there's not an F, which you reference an F, but I guess.
Yeah.
Is it E?
So page.
Murphy obligations is two and then pay, this next page picks up with three, four, five, six. So maybe there's, I don't know. Yeah.
Just no F under.
It's just no F, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mislabeled it. It's E.
Okay.
It's E. I'm sorry. That was my fault. I must, yeah, I think I mislabeled it. So it's E under Murphy obligation right there. That, what I was discussing, at this time, Murphy, uh, land used the development site and 100 feet from blah, 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 blah. And then the other one above it, under city obligation, F, there's two, um, two appear that I was looking at, E and F. And so E says they have to submit the land use application for the development of their site before the city will terminate existing easements. And, and it may not be required. So we're gonna wait till we get that development to see if we're even gonna do that. So it may or may not happen. But the thing that's, I think, really important to notice is that our current easement right now is a utility easement. It is not a right-of-way easement. So we would still need for the bike and pedestrian some type of thing. And this gives us some mechanism to actually initiate that. And, um, and our planning documents also support us and will in that to, to get that pedestrian and bike facility through their spot for connectivity.
Any questions?
Um, not, I have a question, not so much about the easements, but, um, have they started digging?
Have they started digging? Are you kidding me?
Well, I mean, I mean, you told us about Harrison and, and, but have they started digging in this stretch along the Murphy?
Oh, yeah. Murphy's almost all done. We are, we have one section by the car wash that's not installed and that's it. Otherwise, the entire alignment has been installed already.
So there's this stuff in this MOA about, uh, uh, contaminated soils and our obligation and their obligation and blah, blah, blah. Did you encounter contaminated soils?
So we got a test and it came in just barely over clean fill and DEQ ruled on it to put it back in the trench. It wasn't enough to haul off to a facility. So, um, we are not hauling off any contaminated soil except for what's happening to the underground uh, storage tank that was left there. They will, that will be removed and that does not apply to our MOA. Um, Murphy is taking care of that completely.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. Any more questions, comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
We're all racing for the script.
Yeah, how you guys are doing this with one screen. I have three up and I'm barely managing.
Well, I've got, I've got two. I have no excuse. I, I would move, I would move to approve the resolution terminating unused utility easements on the Murf- Murphy property identified as tax lot 11E25CD05800.
I'll second.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I gotta make one other, um, hold on.
I take it all back.
Yeah, you gotta take it back. All right. The resolution, we need to make one amendment to the resolution, uh, that we found. Hold on one second. Okay. So, um, we have one modification to the third whereas on the resolution. To clarify, no hearing is required, um, if the termination easement is less than $25,000. So as reading whereas number three, um, is existing easements are surplus in the public interest to serve by terminating them and termination of the unused easements does not contribute a transfer by the city of an interest in real property valued in excess of $25,000.
So the motion, if council is still interested in approving is as was read, but then adding as amended?
I move to approve the resolution as was read and as amended, or do I need to read the whole thing again?
Yes. But just keep talking. So as, as was read and as was amended, terminating blah, blah, blah.
Okay, I'm lost now. I think someone else should do, oh, okay. Oh, as, and as amended, terminating unused utility easements on the Murphy profit, property identified as tax lot 11E25CD05800. I'll second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution as read and amended, terminating unused utility easements on the Murphy property identified as tax lot 11E25CD05800. Is there any further conversation? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. So please, please pull up this letter that I sent you from, uh, GIPS. So the deal is there's a group in Oak Grove that's attempting to incorporate. We all know that we would love for Oak Grove to be its own city. And the grant that they have applied for requires that a city or county entity be part of that application. A week ago, I thought Clackamas County was on it. They're apparently not on it. So they've reached out to us to see if we can be that entity. It should not cost us anything. It should not take any, um, staff time. It will probably be run through PSU. They will administer the whole thing. But they just need, they need a city to, to be part of the team, uh, to, so that they can get the grant.
The mayor, I do, um, Kelly's on this call and she's worked often with Metro Grants. I do just want to confirm with Kelly that when we sign this, that this would not be an expectation for Metro, that we become the grantee, like the, the wardy, that we don't receive the funds and have to do the grant management of those funds. Or we can put something into the letter that says that this is a letter of support, but it is not, um, a statement of application, something to that effect.
Well, that's what I was wondering about because the letter just says we, we support them going for this grant, which I think is great. I actually had a conversation with Eleanor Hunter about it a couple of weeks ago. But it's a different thing to say we support them going for the grant than to say the city's gonna be their fiscal agent. And I know in another context, there was some trepidation about, yeah, I, I mean, raising those questions that, that Anne just posed to Kelly, so.
Right. And, and when I spoke with, um, someone from this group earlier, it was not with the expectation that we were going to be the fiscal agent.
Oh, okay.
Same with me, yeah.
And I had a conversation with, uh, somebody at Metro, whose name I had in front of me a few seconds ago, but I've lost it now, who said the same thing, that, that we might not be the fiscal agent.
Wouldn't it be okay? I mean, is it, is it not the Oak Grove Community Council that's, that's applying for the grant? Why wouldn't we just name them?
I think so. It's not.
Yeah.
It's.
So who is?
Concerned citizens.
Yeah, it's a loose coalition of citizens.
Okay.
So I will just say, based on the letter, I, I don't know the answer to your question. Anne, I mean, it sounds like there's been subsequent conversations which make, make it, Mary, you feel that it's, that's not the case. Usually this would come down to kind of a checkbox on a, on the actual application for the grant, that there would be some line that we, some check that we would have that says that, you know, the jurisdiction either cosigning onto the application or some formal mechanism, um, that would, would tell me if, if, if the funding is running through us.
I'm comfortable based on council's statements that that is not what you are intending to sign us up for. So I think that if we get a phone call from Metro asking the question at a later date, it's pretty simple. it's pretty simple, because we've received feedback from you. And so I'm fine proceeding with the letter as it is, if that's of interest to you. And if we do get a request to be the fiscal agent, we'll just decline it this time. Yeah. Works for me.
Do you want to change this draft at all, Kelly? Or is it okay the way it is?
Uh, hold on, let me open it. It's pretty short.
It is short.
You know, when it's due, mayor?
Technically?
Technically. So I guess my question is, if you are all generally comfortable with the content, can we just have permission to edit it, to make it a little bit, um, more in alignment with our traditional letters of support? And then we will sign it with your name, mayor, and we'll go from there?
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to be noncommittal, it's just without the application in front of me, I can't tell what we're supporting and how much this letter, like, engages us.
Yeah.
Oh, so then I guess I understand that the application has already been submitted.
It has. Initially, they, they had a letter from Clackamas County and...
It was rescinded.
Yeah, so it sounds like we couldn't, our name couldn't be in that checkbox yet anyway. Right? Like, yeah, like, and, and we could make that clear.
We'll make sure it's clear in the letter. We'll talk about your general support for Oak Grove. I think that the mayor, nobody contradicted the mayor's statements. So we'll work on an extra paragraph. We'll just make sure it's clear, and we'll get something to him for review under his signature.
Cool.
That work? Okay.
Yeah. And I'll, um, if you want to be able to check in with the staffer at Metro, I can connect to you.
That'd be great. And I also need to call CHIPS, so I'll do that to, tomorrow as well.
Okay.
So Kelly, on this one, you don't have to.
Okay, well, just let me know. I mean, whatever, I'm happy to review whatever, um, as well. So we can just connect on it tomorrow.
Sounds good.
It'll be an interesting process to watch, if they, if they get the grant and, and get to move forward with that study. I mean, all those people who think they're in Milwaukee, maybe they'll have their dreams come true.
Yep.
Their city to love on their own.
Are they, are there, are there council reports? Okay.
Not unless you want to report on how much weeds I've pulled. Yeah.
Um, and in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you. See you guys later. It's good to see you all.